That time I heard all four voices, Matt Kiries, thank you. Malia, if you can work your magic, we have the meeting minutes from our work session on November 2nd, please. We'll see what that brings. Great, okay.
Ooh, nice and short?
Yeah, nice and short. I think it was just a general overview of the things we discussed. Does anyone, did anyone catch anything or see anything that needs fixed? Okay. And I make a motion to approve the minutes for November 2nd as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Marcia and a second by Malia. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous as well. Thank you, thank you, Malia. Okay, now we have come to the part called public comment and we ask that anyone who would like to speak has three minutes to tell, to talk to the Planning and Zoning Commission about what's on their mind. If you would like to do so, you may unmute and let me know. You can put a hand up, there's that little hand thing, whatever, but if anyone would like to speak, please do so. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, another second. By the way, I do see Craig here, thank you Craig for joining us. I don't see anyone raising their hand to tell us any secret messages, so. Sarah Burek is asking for the agenda to drop in the chat. My tech wizard is about to do so for you, she's naughty. Thank you, thank you Sarah for the request.
Thank you.
That was obviously Sarah because children in the background. Okay. We are closing the public comment and we will now come into our section called Old Business as in the things we continuously work on. So first up is Luann from Town Council and she will let us know what we need to hear from the council, please.
Okay, yes, so we've had a work session on November 7th and a regular meeting and then we had one on November 14th, a regular one. And on the 7th, at the work session and at the regular meeting, we did discuss the active transportation plan once again and then approved it unanimously at the November, at that night. So that's moved forward and then we'll just wait to hear back from you, Doc. So nothing, nothing new from that until we get some, some news down the line. We've also had disconnection, the bluff bench disconnection on our agenda. Again, at the work session and at the regular ones, Sitla has intervened to join the lawsuit they have to be accepted in. So they are part of, of trying to disconnect. We did discuss the sign ordinance, we did vote to put a stay of enforcement on the sign ordinance as you guys requested. We had an audit for the 2023 and that all came through, looked good. So that's moving, moving forward, no problems there. At the old school, the EPA grant is in, it will be able to do the fire suppression and other things. So we're working, that one's moving along. The ARPA funds that were used up at the community center, they are in the process right now of remodeling that. It's underway. And the ceiling removal, which was a different section over at the old school, has also been almost finished. There's one more column of some sort that they need to go back and get, but otherwise that is moved along. The election for just town council is the only thing on the ballot, but you have to vote by the 20th if you're postmarking it to send it up. And in person, you can go on the 21st, in person at the school or at the community center, sorry. And then let's see, there's no Town of Bluff meeting on the 21st, our next regular one will be December 5th. And that's it for this time. Any questions on any of that or other?
Luann, I just had one question and that was when you in fact said you would not enforce signs, the sign code violations and, and questions right now, did you give a timeframe? Or is it just until sign code is updated?
We discussed some time, but I don't think that we put a time limit on it.
Okay.
I might be wrong, we might want to check on that to be sure, but.
Okay, okay, so we can keep working on this and get it, okay, I'll explain that then during sign discussion. Good, thank you.
Unfortunately, I do not work well with Microsoft Word as well as I work with Google. So this is the best I can do for our agenda. I cannot figure out how to paste it into the chat, so. Sorry, guys.
No, that works.
Okay, thanks.
Just fine, thank you.
It's good, Malia, that's great, just so our, our guests can figure out what they're, you know, see. She, Sarah is pointing out that she just wanted to see what was on there kind of thing, so.
I like it.
Okay, thank you Luann, any other questions for Luann for the town? Okay. We have update on non-compliance signs, including the letters for Bluff dwellings, Desert Rose, and an update for the town attorney on the Twin Rock sign. So, here's where we stand. Because there were so many pieces to the sign code as existing, that we were running up against for enforcement of non-compliance. And simultaneously, there were lots of changes, updates and basic definitions perhaps, that needed to be updated in our sign code. The Planning and Zoning Commission said, let's take a step back, ask the town to wait just a minute here while we do all of the above, so that as we approach people for updating their signs to match the code, we're all on the same page and we're all forward-thinking now. So just, just as an example, would be when we were discussing these sign codes in our work sessions, we came up with things like, alright, we have to adjust the amount of signage you can have. In other words, we're seeing that perhaps by regulating the size of the signs, we're limiting that for some of the bigger properties and some of the oddly positioned properties, corners, back, backlots, whatever. So, there's an example of something that we went, well, wait a minute, maybe we shouldn't be enforcing until we realize what those measurements mean. The other, the next thing might be, well, we know that the next thing is, we've all seen some emails from business owners around us who are challenging, if you will, the definitions of the signs. If it waves, is that a mover or a waiver? Is that a flag or a banner? Is that, and I, I understand what we think we wrote, but we need to be sure that everyone is on the same page about what is written. What I'm hopeful for is that by doing this in this manner, there'll still be people who won't agree, or there's still maybe a sign that's not in compliance, but that we will all have brought it forward together. And we received, as I mentioned, some emails to Planning and Zoning telling us that there was, there was challenges and disappointment in what, what the sign code has. What I would put up forward is while we're working on this, we will need to hear and understand some suggestions of what might work and what ideas. As we're discussing this, we're putting out some things that we see that we either did wrong, defined differently, or we did right and we want to go ahead and challenge and enforce. So, I'm hoping that's an overview of kind of where we stand. One of the things we could do is go along in these discussions that we have tonight and perhaps since we have another work session scheduled and since we have a little time now because we've asked to sort of stop the enforcement, that we not have to go through specifics this evening. But we can certainly point out kind of where we are. Malia, did, did Amanda send us our sign discussion?
Oh yeah, let me bring it up.
Maybe bring that up and we can just see a few of the notes of the things that we discussed. Did I, did I kind of explain where we are, okay?
Very well, yes.
Yeah, that seemed great.
Okay, so, so putting this up on the screen, what we're doing is showing everyone who's watching or can see their screens, some of the pieces that we've been discussing. There's that banner definition, we have to get that straight if we're going to be challenged for it. There's the device discussion, we think of it as a mechanical device, but it's not how it's set it, so we want to update. What other things, oh, sizes, sizes and zones, things like that, where we want to make sure that if you, yeah, like the maximum frontage for signing and for being on a, in a commercial zone, we don't want 43 signs in one place. However, maybe there's a way to say, if you have one sign on the front, can you have a sign off to the side that's a different size? And so we are in fact just trying to discuss all these things and wherever you see that we put in some notes and none of this is, none of this is done, this is us talking about these ideas. Perhaps at our work sessions, we'll get closer to these. If someone has, if business owners are listening that have something that they can recommend, for example, if they say, they say, well, I've noticed when I went to do a sign that it was actually this big, or if, if they say perhaps corner lots could have this or some suggestions you might have for us to use in these discussions, that would be fine. The end result, remember, will be us writing something, getting it organized and having a public hearing. So people will be able to say, oops, too big, too small, wait a minute. So, let's do this, any comments from Planning and Zoning right now about where we stand on this sign note? Our sign notes?
Are we not getting into specifics, was that the idea? Or we're just gonna?
Brian, I'm just a little bit worried that sitting here and dissecting the specifics
Yeah, yeah.
Lose time, but if you have, first of all, if you have one that jumped out at you glaringly, catch it.
No, I have a specific question, but I don't know if it's, I just have a question about the banner flag thing, but I don't need to, if we're not trying to dive into the specifics of the conversation right now, I don't need to after right now, it can be held for our work session.
Okay, go ahead, Malia.
Sarah doesn't have a question.
I, I see that and I, I wasn't going to open to the public because we could get into the, all this back and forth. And Sarah, if you, if, I tell you what, Sarah, ask your question and I'll see if it's a technical question we don't want to get into or if it's just something that we can clarify for you. Go ahead.
Thank you, guys. Not, this is nothing you have to clarify now, but as we were reading the sign ordinance, places we would like some clarification on are, what if the sign is movable, therefore consider temporary, not a permanent installation? And then what is the definition of right-of-way? So it says the sign cannot be in the right-of-way, but a lot of properties like the education center that's along the highway, our parking area could potentially be part of the right-of-way, is that meeting the, the commercial setback? What's the definition and just if, not now, but in the future, if those could be clarified, we'd appreciate that.
Excellent, that was exactly what we need to hear. I wrote down the movable temporary discussion and the right-of-way discussion and I think those would be perfect things for my notes for our work session. So the answer is, I'm not going to answer you specifically, I'm going to take those under advisement for our discussions. Does that feel okay, Sarah?
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay. Because, because I let Sarah ask the que, well, Luann has, Luann has a question, go ahead, Luann.
It's not a question, I just, in my notes, I did see that we voted 90 days.
Aha, okay, okay, then that does put us with a good, yep, good.
Yes, that's December, January, it'll be mid-February, I guess.
Okay, awesome, that's, that's good to know.
We can confirm that and it can be changed, I'm sure, but I did see that in my notes.
Right, now I think that's wonderful because we'll keep discussing and if we're close, we'll be great. If we're not, we'll say, wait a minute, wait a minute.
And you've got the, to get the public hearing
Public hearing, exactly.
Stuff, so, anyway.
Great, thank you Lu for double.
Sorry, I didn't have it originally.
No, that's great. Okay, I think this was a good overview of where we stand. I think we should take questions like Sarah's and comments than letters that we've gotten. I will throw in that I received a physical copy of an email that we all received from Amor. And so that's great, we have the physical copy for the files and we've all seen it in our email communications. So, those are the kinds of things that we want to use to help us make these, some of these decisions. Any last comments about direction of sign discussion?
We're making great progress, keep up the good work, team.
I just, I guess, though, maybe this is a follow-up as to what I was thinking about saying is that I just want, I wasn't here when, you know, I wasn't part of this when this was all developed. And so I guess for me, I'm just looking for some clarification and we can do this at a later point, but as to where some of, like the rationale for some of the decision-making. So for me, I'm, you know, something that struck me in some of the Publix letters and the business owner letters were discussions about like traffic safety and signs. And so I, for me, I'm just looking for like maybe even just direction and clarification as to where the logic behind sort of traffic safety and its relationship to signs comes in. And I'm not, not putting out an opinion at all, but I do just want to know like where those ideas came from and what they are, because I have not been finding, maybe I should just Google better, but.
Okay, Brian, that's an excellent, and I'm going to, by the way, put traffic safety on my notes. Because I agree with you, when none of us, let's see, Amanda would be the person who was here the longest in terms of when this was written and hopefully she'll have a little input for us of some of the things that, that, you know, were in fact addressed. My, my, I know I'm the one, I know I personally did bring up the word traffic safety when talking about the banners because that was something I felt, that was, that was my interpretation of, of what, one of the, one of the things I cared about was.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, so you're right, I don't know that I have a lot of things to go on. My, my only comment, which I was going to make tomorrow, but I'll throw in now and we'll close this session and that is that I had a friend staying in town. I've had two different friends staying in town with whom I've gotten into this discussion, just overall, over general discussion and neither of them knew any, had seen any banners. What banners? And I'm like, okay, never mind, not traffic safeties.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Nice feedback.
Yeah, it is, it was interesting. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's close out signs and work on that in our work session under the guise of not, not enforcing anything for the moment and in fact getting good feedback. Thank you. The next, and by the way, there is no update from the town council, the town attorney unless he spoke to Amanda, who is not with us this evening, so we'll move on from that. The RV ordinance. I would have to say virtually the same thing in that, in that we've been working on the RV ordinance. Every time we get somewhere, we keep going down, down, down and you can see there's, you know, little less writing in each of these as we clean up, as we go. So there's, you know, but once we get somewhere, then we have a few more questions. I would throw out some of the same comments that refer back to the signs and that is input from RV park owners, input from RV owners. Our input from people who experienced this. One of the things that we found, for example, is Malia was living in an RV park for a while, so she had some great comments of, well, it works like this. But if we want to have, once again, just some input of if you have an RV park and we say you need a fence around it, is that true? You know, some of the things that might affect an RV park, do you have comments on? Do you want to help us figure this out? If you have the time or commitment to listen to the work sessions or, you know, follow up on, on some of that and get in touch with us, send a letter or a, an email to Planning and Zoning saying some of these things, that would be well, well-accepted. Members of Planning and Zoning, do you have any specific comments on this or shall we delegate it to our work session? What do I hear?
This document is so big.
Yeah, I feel like the last couple of times we've attacked it too, we just keep like kind of rabbit-holing. So I feel like maybe another work session again where we just keep plowing through it might be. I mean, I think it's, it's in a good spot, it's just, it is big because there's so many facets to it.
I, we, we have another work session scheduled, which we'll talk about a little later in our agenda. But I, I agree with you that it's like, it's not ready yet to say this is, this is what we're doing. It's ready for us to keep hashing out these details. So I'm liking the idea of hanging on just a little bit more and we will use it as a work session vehicle to, to keep going. Okay, is everyone good with closing out the RV discussion?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Sounds good.
Marcia, you are on mute. Come back.
Hello? Thanks, Mom. Okay, we are on the next agenda item, which is discussion on requirements for dirt-moving activities within town boundaries. And to, to open this up, it was comments from Town Council, P&amp;Z and citizens on some earth-moving going on in town that brought to our attention, not that you can't move earth, but what are you doing? If you're moving earth, are you in fact impacting your neighbor? Or are you just doing a little flattening of your ground kind of thing? So, it brought up the idea of, should we be, should we have an ordinance or regulation or just even a line in one of our ordinances that talks about that? At the time, Amanda looked up a couple of ideas to show us what some towns might do and Brian bravely stepped up to say he would like to present some sort of draft working document that we could edit because we're so good at editing, we're not good. So Brian, take the floor, take the floor, birthday boy.
Oh, thanks, thanks, thanks. Yeah, I would just say that at this moment, it's probably not clean enough to, I'll, I should share it with everybody, but right now it's just a bunch of, let me see if I can do it. I'll show you that it's not something that you want to look at, but. At the moment, let's see, is that showing up? Yeah, there it all is. So I pulled just a bunch of, I won't make everyone look through all this, but I'll share it with everybody before our next work session, so you can look at it, but as you can see, I pulled just, I know Amanda had reached out to Moab and Blanding to talk to them about what their regulations and policies were on earth-moving and excavation and stuff. And they both referenced the International Building Code, this, I'll go back up here, the Appendix J, which is their grading codes. And so right now, this document is the beginning of, it's sort of just been cutting and pasting and I have the Appendix J in here, I have a few, a bunch of links to a few different ordinances that I felt like were too intense to cut and paste into a document since to keep it from becoming 150 pages long. Also a couple of links to some permit applications and then also some, some other links to some, what they're, what I've noticed is a lot of hillside-like development permitting, which seems to be where a lot of Appendix J ends up in town ordinances is it's, it's, they don't, it's not, I haven't found a lot where there's just like a grading code or a grading ordinance, but it usually is, they take Appendix J and then it seems like they get woven into especially, especially kind of like hillside developments where I think things like drainage and, and flood worries become, you know, these, the codes and the provisions that they put forth in Appendix J really apply. So I think where it's at right now, I think it just would be useful tonight, maybe for me in terms of just honing it down, is hearing what some of the commissioner, what we all think about what we want to sort of approach with it. I mean, Moab has this really great succinct grading permit application that they have where they have a 50-yard threshold, which is a huge, which is a very large amount of dirt. It's, I think, I, I found a visual, I needed to, I'll find that visual for you, but it's like, I think I was saying it was like a, it's like a large, it's a commercial dump truck with like a trailer behind it. It's a very large amount, but that's sort of their cutoff is the 50-yard. And anything below 50-yard, they don't ask unless it's on a hillside and then there's another, there's some other rules. So just sort of hearing what people think about in terms of what, how we as a commission want to approach and like what we want to talk about in it. I mean, I definitely understand for me personally, like I do think hillsides make sense. We don't have a ton of like very extreme hillsides all over, but there, I know, except for Malia's, Malia's house might be on the biggest hill, right? But I, so I do think that's important. And then I also think, I do like the idea of setting sort of a threshold at which, you know, because I don't think, like maybe you were implying, Marcia, like if someone's just flattening out a, you know, a parking spot, I don't think we really need them to come and do that. And then there's questions about like watersheds and drainages. And so just sort of getting a general idea of what people are thinking in terms of what, how we want to approach integrating all of the, the kind of the grading rules, because the grading rules are also very, Appendix J, which both like Blanding and the county and Moab and some places around here use are very specific sort of, you know, as I can show you, they have like some very specific rules and ideas about like, you know, sort of these different ways to incorporate grading and they might be more specific than we want unless we're talking about something like a hillside development codes, but so, just anyway. People's com, people's ideas about what they, what parts of earth-moving we want to approach would help me kind of shrink it down.
Well, Brian, that is an amazing presentation because you were able to find a bunch of stuff to bring us. And I am always a fan of editing versus blank pages, not knowing what to think. Let's go around and see if anyone does have any questions or comments to help direct to Brian. I will, but I'm going to wait. So Malia, is there anything that you had on your notes? I will, but I'm going to wait. So Malia, is there anything that you had on your notes?
Um, I know that in our last meeting, we had talked about creep possibly developing a, I mean, I'm going to just quote our last minutes, Hayden felt suggested developing a code document and perhaps including demolition, creating more of a construction ordinance. So I'm curious if we want to expand it past just dirt earthworks, um, or if we want to just keep it at as this for now. I think with all of the other things that we have going on, I think that maybe sticking with just dirt works could be good for now, and then maybe expanding into a construction later. Uh, I don't know. Hi, Quinn.
That's a good question. I mean, I think I, when I was looking at other people's uh, ordinances and codes, there was also, it often seemed like there was an inclusion of just sort of a line that said, like, no demolition may begin until you've cleared these other hurdles. So part of me also thinks for, you know, if we wanted to cover sort of the demolition thing, it could be sort of couched in sort of like a, you need to present the plan where this is going before you demolish, but. But yeah, and then I don't know what, what lengths to which we want to include construction.
I, I think that, um, I think what's interesting there is it's only one little piece of each of these things that gets us. Like demolition, I don't care if you take down old stuff on your, on your property. Good, take down what you want. It's only, does it affect something else? Did you, did you destroy something that then fell onto your neighbor's property and did, you know, and those kinds of things? So that, that to me, I think each of these things that we're bringing up are things that we've seen happen. And we want to make sure we just protect the neighborhood, not tell people that they can't take a building down. Just say, hey, can you take it down without affecting the meter? Um, and I'm not sure that we even have to, those are the, I'm just talking about the things we talked about and, and, uh, so that was demolition. And then for the actual grading stuff, once again, I have no problem. I agree with you. People are, um, grading land all the time for to fix their driveway or to fix their parking or something like that. And yes, they absolutely need to be allowed to without, you know. However, once again, it is just the part where you say, have you affected your neighbor or the neighborhood or the street with regard to drainage and other things? So we may need to reflect and, oh, last thing, and I wrote that on my notes when you were talking, Brian, is geological hazards. Geological hazards are typically mentioned in building codes that you have to, that you have to, um, mitigate, you have to not have, um, the flood come through because you didn't, you know, flatten the ground in the right direction kind of thing. So that's something I'd like to see addressed, which is what you were talking about hillside, et cetera. So Brian, I'm not sure specifically what I can tell you to take out of your pages here, but I can tell you, we can, we definitely want to keep it simple. And in my, and in my opinion, it is protecting the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, that actually helps a lot. I think, I mean, I think that the, the, you know, I, I have to say, I know that the town, I know that the town of bluff is very sensitive to the word Moab. But I do think that Moab's, uh, approach to it, I, I like, which is to say, I think the reason they divide their sort of grading and earth moving into basically like, you know, the, that permit for any, you know, basically saying nothing under 50 yards needs a permit. If you're moving that much more, you need to do it. And then everything else is in the discussion about hillside is a lot about uh, not creating situations where you're going to have runoff and like landslides onto your neighbor's lawns. So I think that using that model makes a lot of sense to me here too, which is just to sort of say, you know, if you're moving so much that we need to know that you aren't, you know, cutting enough earth that it's going to really affect everything. Or if you don't live in a space that has that natural grade that needs to be really sensitive, we need to be sensitive to. You know, I, I think I can, I mean, I think I'll just probably proceed with that mentality and just sort of hone, simplify what I've found and that, that's helpful.
That's great. That sounds terrific. Um, let's see, Ed, did you have any comment to where we are so far? Okay, we've lost Ed for a moment here. Um, okay, here's, I think we're doing great. I think this tells us that, um, once again, that Brian was able to.
Somebody had to me, I had to hit star six to come back in. I didn't know.
I'm sorry, go for it, Ed.
I'm done. I'm good.
Okay. Okay. So in that case, what we're looking at is if you want to hone this just a little bit for our next work session, at which point we can get it down to working document size, not with all the answers yet. But that might be the best way to go and distribute that to planning and zoning. So we'll have it for a work session. Does that sound good, Brian?
That sounds great. I'll probably spend, you know, over the next, because I, unfortunately, like I said, I'm not going to be able to, I have to work tomorrow.
Right, we're going to talk about that in a minute, but if, yeah, if you.
Yeah, if we reschedule, I can do it for that, or if we, I'll just work on it over the next few days and try to.
Okay.
Cut it down and then I'll share it to everybody once it's not
Great.
an insurmountable amount of pages.
Great. Okay. Well, I think, I think we're on the right track, but once we look at it together, we might go, whoa, too much or whoa, not enough. And you'll be better sitting there with it. Great.
Perfect.
Thank you so much, Brian. That was a great presentation to get us started. Um, okay, we are moving along the schedule here and the next, um, discussion on our agenda is the 2024 meeting schedule. And what happened was we had a discussion amongst ourselves last time that said, uh, Wednesday might not be as fortuitous a night as it had been in the past, and therefore Thursday would work better. Um, I went ahead and I hope got the dates right. I, I just thought this at least was a good way to see that it's the typical time where many months, all, all the months have two meetings in them, the first and third Thursday, but a few of them will not happen because of the Monday holiday. So what I'd like to do is have any comments first. Um, and Luanne, I might include you in this one to say, did the town council talk about that at all?
No. Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay, so if we were to take Thursdays, as we might go ahead and do, you guys would just go, well, we can't have Thursdays.
Right, I mentioned it, but I don't think we.
Worried about it. Okay. Okay. Yes, Malia.
So as you guys know, I live to make life difficult. And I have actually realized that EMS training is most Thursday nights at six o'clock. So Thursdays might not be as good as I'd originally thought for 2024.
Okay, okay, let's, let's talk about this then.
Let's talk about this.
So if Thursday doesn't work for Malia, but Wednesday doesn't work for Brian.
Well, I would say Wednesdays, although they're not ideal, they, they were, it, it's workable for me because that is the day that I, Dawn and I are both at the clinic. And I've been able to, we have a lot of RN coverage on that day, so we actually, it has not been, it has not been an issue so far, so. And as long as everyone understands that if someone comes in coding, I have to step away from that.
Yeah, get your priorities straight.
Yeah, right. Sorry, sir. I know you can't breathe, but I have to, I have to vote on this ordinance.
Luanne, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering, six o'clock is a conflict, but it, it may, I thought maybe you might want to consider four o'clock or something.
Uh, okay, yes, I see what you're saying. In other words, it doesn't have to be six if it doesn't work that way. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm old and retired, so I have a much more open schedule than my working friends. So I defer to the working friends. Here's my thought. It's, if we're back to Wednesdays, let's redo this number five for our next agenda so that we see how that looks um, for the days and dates and approve it at a next meeting. Um, in the meantime, everybody can be checking their work schedule. We'll get Amanda in on this. Ed, did you have any conflict or anything?
So far, so good.
Okay, so let's table approving our meeting dates until we can find something that works for all of us. And it never will for every day. Malia, well, good catch though, Malia. I'm glad.
Yeah, that EMS training is only once a month. And so if it, if it happens to fall on the same time as a planning and zoning, I can.
Well, that's actually a good question. Do you think it is the first and third Thursday?
Well, I know that there's one tonight and.
Well, tonight's.
Right, it's Wednesday, so. Um, I don't know, I'll, I'll try to get some more information. Unfortunately, I usually only get like a month notice. So I can try to get some more information on what that looks like before our next.
Good, that would, let's, let's do that. All right, everyone's, go play with the calendar again and we'll see what happens.
I do know real quick that Amanda did say that she has a work meeting that she misses a lot of Wednesday nights. So it might not be good for Amanda either. So it might be that we go with Thursday or whatever other day it is and it'll be, it'll all be okay.
Okay, I'm, like I said, I'm going to leave it to you working stiffs to, to check your calendars and let me know. And what we can do is send an email around amongst us that we could set up, you know, for the next agenda to, to put on there, which day everyone talked about as being best. And we'll go from there, see what happens. Okay. Um, any other comments on calendars? Are we? Okay. Uh, moving on to new business, we have none, so we're just old. Um, land use clearance applications, we did not receive any. Anybody know of anything I didn't hear about? Okay, um, items for the next agenda. So for the next agenda, we're going to want to do meeting dates 2024. Okay. Looking up at our old news that we keep doing, I would like to update, no, I would like to better state the references for our sign code enforcement, instead of keep talking about the letters for, et cetera. So I would recommend we say something like sign code update and RV update and earth moving update as our subject matters. Because we are not in the process anymore of, um, enforcing, uh, any of these things. We're trying to work them. So I will suggest that it's written as update of numbers two, numbers three, and numbers four. Okay. Um, what else for the next agenda, ladies and gentlemen? What else do you see? Okay, and, um, next on the agenda is other. Does anyone have something to tell us that we forgot to talk about or that they heard or we need to know?
I believe we should discuss tomorrow's work.
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you. I, I circle, I circle. Thank you, Malia. That's great. Okay, here's our dilemma. It turns out Brian cannot join us tomorrow, which is fine. It turns out that Amanda certainly can't join us in person. We could hope that she could sit through it. Um, it is my question to the team, would you like to reschedule? Do we feel, because in my take on this, I will do whatever we all decide because I can be there. But, um, we have to decide, the idea is don't we get the most done when we're all together? That's my thought.
For sure.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I feel like personally, I would like to do that just because I'd like to participate. I think realistically, because next week is Thanksgiving. Um, we'd be looking at probably
The last.
The follow week, the last week in November. But I also think that with the stay and the enforcement that we probably could justify pushing it back to that week without feeling like we're.
Yeah, I think that, I think that is exactly right, Brian. Every, every one of those points is well made. It is my suggestion then that we cancel tomorrow's meeting. What I need to know is the logistics of doing so. The PMM, what, does the PMN website get notified? Luanne, do you remember that? Is that, do I have to notify PMN?
Yeah, you would. Okay. Yeah, you need to cancel it there and then Erin could put a cancellation on the website.
Okay, so PMM, we can put the website canceled. And it was for 6:00 PM tomorrow night, so we have time to do this. Um, and shall we schedule a meeting? Or wait till after? I'd love to schedule a meeting because then by the time we get to our next meeting, we'd have a little bit more to talk about because, because I feel bad when we just go through these without, you know, having something to say. So I'm looking at the last week of, our next meeting is December 6th. So we have that whole week in between after Thanksgiving. What if we just said Thursday night?
Yeah, I think that'd be just delayed by two weeks to the third, that's the 30th, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Yeah, that works for me as well.
Work schedule, it, work session is rescheduled. Work session 6:00 PM or do you want, can people do it sooner or what, what do you want? Work session.
I'm going to be working at an elementary school that day till about four. So yeah, probably six will be best for me.
Okay, work session 6:00 PM at the CC. Can we have the CCs that night?
Uh, Thursday night. Let me do some quick checking real quick.
Okay. And by the way, we'll get, we'll get Amanda in on this before we, um, post. I, I might, I might just call or text her after the meeting with these couple of updates.
Yeah, we're all good at the community center.
Okay, would you just hang on to that for us for that? Let's schedule a work session 6:00 PM at the community center and virtual for, um, November 30th, 2023 at six. Okay. Um, then, and cancel tomorrow's, okay. I've not canceled a meeting in a long time, so I might get some help on that. Um, is Erin around, Luanne? She's in tomorrow. If I need some help, I'll just get her in the morning to help me so I don't have to wake Amanda. Okay, cool. Um, excellent. Thank you for that save, Malia. What else have we got, ladies and gentlemen? I think.
I did just pull up my email again, and there was the discussion about the subdivision update from Michael Hansen.
Yeah, so that's an interesting thing. The, the legis, the state legislature passes new laws every year. And they give us direction that says you have to update your subdivision or any other ordinance to go with our new laws. Typically in a town with a staff, the planning department would be writing all that new stuff and putting it into our ordinance and bringing it to planning and zoning to read. And we'd go, oh, that's a good one. Oh, wait, no, fix that. And then we would give it to town council for approval. However, we don't have the staff to start that process. So they are offering, I, I'm with you, Luanne. They, they have, they have a process in the state that says, hey, you little guys, we'll help pay for you to get your stuff updated. So then you can use it to approve and pass along to town. That's what this, these people are doing. They're soliciting us and saying, hey, we're one of the approved um, planning people to help you do this. So Luanne is going to tell us the town perspective on that. Go.
Yes, and apologies for missing that on my notes, but we did discuss that. Anne does have, have sent in a request for a meeting with them. And she, I said the planning and zoning was, you know, the ones that need to be there. And she said that she wanted at least one other council person, and she'd already reached out to Amanda. But I think one or two of you ought to be there a couple of years. And I think it's great that they'll help to do that because then we know we've got what they want and whatnot. So yes, it is in the process.
Thank you, Luanne. So I think what you're saying is the town's going to notify P and Z that it is happening. And one, at least chair or one or two people should be, not a quorum, but just a couple of people to listen and see if we like their approach. Perfect. Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. We, we have to meet all these state codes. And it is impossible for us little guys to sort of keep up with that in a timely manner. But the idea that the state actually allocated some funds to help pay for that is awesome because that means that someone can come help us do it. So thank you. That'd be great, Luanne.
Yay.
Okay, Malia, did you find any other secrets in our email?
No, I motioned to adjourn.
Was that in your email?
Damn, what a twist. What a twist.
So I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a? Oh, I heard this.
Now one was Ed.
Okay. Before we adjourn, because I, there's time for a comment on the, on the motion. Happy birthday, Brian officially from planning and zoning.
Oh, thank you.
Now we're going to vote to adjourn and then we can, and then we can sing. Aye.
Aye.
Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Brian.
Birthday to you.
Don't speak.
It's official. Meeting adjourned at 6:57. Thank you so much, everyone. Malia, thank you for being.
Yeah, thanks, Malia.
Yep, thanks, everybody. Have a great night. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thanks, Luanne.